And I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. City Council, Granbury City Council Regular Meeting, 6:00 PM, Tuesday, September the 6th, 2022. We're in Granbury City Hall, 116 West Breach Street, Granbury, Texas, 76048. We are now called to order, and I would like to invite Reverend Fred Orkut to come up and give us our prayer, if you would, sir. Please stand.
Pray with me, please. Our Father God, we praise and exalt your holy name. You are worthy of glory and honor and praise in our obedience. We acknowledge that you are the giver of life and of all good things. You've been so good to us, especially in sending Jesus, our Lord and Savior, to die on the cross to pay for our sins and arise again and lead us to real life. Thank you, Lord. You have truly blessed us. Thank you for Granbury. Lord, it's a pleasant place to live and to rear our kids. It's a city where we're free to worship as you desire us and where your presence, where our presence as the body of Christ is not only tolerated but appreciated. Father, thank you for our mayor and each of these council people. Thank you for those who serve as employees and volunteers. They're all a blessing from you. We ask you, Lord, to bless them all abundantly, bless their marriages and their families. Father Phil Mayor Garrett and council members Corrigan, Reiner, Rodriguez, Vale, and Wadley with your wisdom, with courage, and with integrity so that their actions will redound to your glory and the welfare of our citizens. Bless City Manager Kaufman with faithfulness and integrity to execute the policies of the mayor and council, to provide them wise counsel, and to represent all the city employees well. Lord, perhaps today more than ever, many of us are afraid of the future. It seems like our world is turning upside down. Hatred and vitriol are all around us. Thank you that you have shielded Granbury and Hood County from much of this. Father, we know that you have not given up control of your creation, and we trust in you. Deliver us from fear. Enable our mayor and council to deal with the issues rationally, fearlessly, and with compassion in accordance with your word so that righteousness will prevail and you will be glorified. Thank you, Father. We ask all this, trusting in our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. And when the mayor forgets to ask anyone to lead us in the pledge, he turns and said, would the council please help me in leading of the pledge?
Pledge and lead us. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, council. We'll now move to the proclamations and presentation. I have a proclamation for the Patriot Day and National Day of Service Remembrance and a proclamation for Constitution Week. Now, we'll come down to the front and read these. Okay. I'm getting a motion here from the photographer that we need to get in tighter. You were looking at me when you said that. Okay. Let me read this official proclamation. Whereas on September 11th, 2001, the American people endured with courage and heroism the worst terrorist attack on United States soil in our nation's history, and came together in a remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity, performing countless acts of kindness, generosity, and compassion. And whereas each year on this somber day, we remember those who lost their lives at the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, and in the field in southwest Pennsylvania. We pay tribute to those who rose in service, and we honor those who continue to serve our country today. And whereas, as a community, we honor the people who aided the innocent victims of those attacks, risking and often sacrificing their own lives. And whereas Memorial Lane at the Jim Burks Firefighters Memorial Park provides the community an opportunity to recognize the valiant service and sacrifices given each day by members of our armed forces and first responders. Now therefore, I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granbury, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2022, as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance in Granbury, Texas, and urge our citizens to set aside September the 11th as a day to unite, reflect, and remember those who gave their lives on this date 21 years ago. The Friends of Memorial Lane invite the community to participate in a remembered service at the Jim Burks Firefighters Memorial Park on Sunday, September the 11th, 2022. And this is given under my hand and seal of the City of Granbury on the 6th day of September 2022. Jim Jarrett, Mayor. And I believe there's someone, Mike?
Right behind me. Wanted to give us some information. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Mike Donnelly, and I'm brand new on the board with these fine folks here. Patriots' Day, September 11th, it's a pretty important day to myself, being a member of service, and we're going to honor those that perished that day, along with the ones over the past 21 years that gave their life for this country, either in service or after they returned home and lost battle to the demons. I really hope that you guys come out. It's going to be a good program. I hope we can educate the younger generations that have not been around to understand the history and reflect on what we've gone through through these last two decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And I think we still need to get closer here. I'd like to repeat what Mike was saying. September the 11th, right out here at Memorial Park, 7:00 PM, the ceremony, the service will start, actually. I have another official proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2022, marks the 235th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to attend the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granbury, do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23, 22, 2022, as Constitution Week in Granbury, and urge our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guarding of our liberties. Given under my hand, the seal of the City of Granbury on the 6th day of September 2022. If the members of the Constitution, the DAR contingent, would come forth, I'd like to present this to you. Thank you, ladies. I want to present this official proclamation to you, and then I'm going to hand you the mic and ask if you have a few words to say.
Thank you. We appreciate this, yes, very much, for your time, Mayor, and city council people, and all of your staff for preparing this to help us. As you know, we're part of the Daughters of the Ameri-- we are the Daughters of the American Revolution, Elizabeth Crocker Chapter. Even if you don't know too much about us, we are a women's lineage and service society. We're a national organization, the largest of its type. We promote patriotism. We protect and preserve histor-- history, historic preservation. And lastly, we are all about bettering education opportunities for adults and children. And so, in that being said, I'd like to quickly introduce you to some of the members here. It's Honorary Regent and our current Chapter Chaplain, Margaret Cook. And next, we have two times corresponding secretary, recording secretary, Olean Roberts. And lastly, Fran Potite, all-around good chapter member and always available to help. All these ladies are always around. And last but not least, today, sitting on another adventure today, is Kathy Castro in the audience. So, we do many different things and wear many hats. I'd like to invite all of you, please, to come to Constitution Day Celebration, September 17th. It's going to be on the Hood County Courthouse lawn. We start at 4:00. At the gazebo, we're going to ring our bells to commemorate the signing of the Constitution. And then, right after that, from 4:30 to 6:30, there'll be a number of stations. We'll be dressed in historical costumes, and we will play the heroes of the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, such as Mrs. Alexander Hamilton, and Ben Franklin, and Penelope Barker, to name a few. We'll have an information table, a coloring table for the kids, so please join us. No charge. Come join in the history. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for all that you do. Appreciate it. If any of you get a chance or are asked by the DAR to present at the Constitution Camp that they have for the children, it is a wonderful experience. They will give you X amount of time, and whatever that X is, that's what you get, no more. Tried it last year. Now, we have public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. Have a time limit of three minutes allotted at this time for comments regarding agenda items that are not listed as a public hearing. Public hearing comments will be recognized when the public hearing is opened. And Carla, I have none? We have none. Okay. We'll move to the consent agenda. Yes? We will move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items and be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Counsel, I know that you've had a chance to look through all of this. Does anyone want to move a consent agenda item to the deliberation agenda? Not seeing anyone, not hearing anyone that wants to move it. Do I hear a motion that the consent agenda be approved as is? Mr. Wadley makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. It is approved 6-0. Next, we have the deliberation agenda. And this is a public hearing. This is about considering adopting ordinance number 22-47, approving the fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual operating budget beginning on October the 1st, 2022, and ending on September 30, 2023. Consider ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2022, 2023. And does we have individuals from the public that would like to speak? I see no one has signed up, but is there anyone that would like to speak on our budget? I opened the, what's this? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we have a video to do that, and then I will open the public hearing.
Can you play that video?
Hi, I'm Chuck LaCotta with the City of Granbury. Here's an explanation of the city's budget for fiscal year 2023, which actually begins October 1st, 2022. The city's budget is a plan. Where does the money come from? And where will it be spent to uphold the city's mission and vision for the future? By law, the city cannot plan to spend more than it brings in. This year's balanced budget is achieved without reaching into the city's rainy day fund. Here are the citywide expenditures by type. Where does the money come from? The biggest source of money for the City of Granbury is not property tax, it's sales tax. When you buy a combo meal at Whataburger, the total cost is $8.65. Of that, 8.25% or 66 cents is sales tax. The state keeps 50 cents of the $8.65. The county gets 4 cents. The city gets 12 cents. Sales tax is collected on almost everything sold at the retail level and online. Granbury collected about $10.5 million in sales tax in the fiscal year that ended in September 2021. Now, that's a lot of money, but there is good news. Sales tax is paid by both residents and visitors to Granbury. When people from out of town eat at our restaurants and buy things at our stores, they're paying taxes, and a portion of that is revenue for the City of Granbury. As more people come to visit and buy things, the city collects more sales tax. There's another tax that benefits Granbury residents but doesn't come out of their pockets, the hotel occupancy tax. When people stay in our hotels, motels, and bed and breakfasts, an extra 13% is added to their bill. The state gets 6%. The city keeps 7%. This year, the city should collect more than $900,000 in hotel occupancy tax, and almost all of it is paid by people who don't live in Granbury. The current property tax rate is 38.7 cents. The proposed rate for next year is an even 38 cents. Here's an example of the savings. For a $300,000 home, the annual city property tax bill drops from $1,161 to $1,140. The homeowner saves $21 on city property tax next year. Under the proposed rate in our example, you'll be saving $21, yet you'll still be getting excellent police and fire protection, city street maintenance, clean water to your home, wastewater taken from your home, electricity, beautiful parks, tourism, building code plan review and inspection, planning and zoning, economic development, municipal court, airport, mosquito control, animal control, many more services, and the people, management, and infrastructure to operate the city. One thing that's important to know, the city does not set the valuation of your home, the Hood Central Appraisal District does. For Hood County as a whole, over the last decade, they've been increasing appraisal values at approximately 7.6% higher per year. This coming year, appraisal values have jumped 24%. City council members have taken into account the rising property appraisals and intentionally kept the city tax rate at or below other cities. There are a few more noteworthy sources of city revenue to explain. First, a quick explanation of the city-owned utilities and the revenue they bring in. Customers are charged for what they use, the cost of operating and maintaining the systems, and there's some money collected to fund anticipated future growth. Like everything else, the cost to operate the utility system increases every year. Those costs are passed on to customers, and there's no profit margin included. Then, there are franchise fees. When companies that provide cable TV, telephone, electric, trash collection, and other industries use city property to distribute their services, Granbury collects rental fees, also known as franchise fees or rent, for the use of public property. Another revenue generated for the city is the aviation fuel sales and hangar rentals at the airport. Those more than offset the cost of operating the airport, and you can't talk about the airport without pointing out the estimated $17 million in positive economic impact it has annually on the community. There are other sources of city revenue. When you apply for a zoning change, have a building inspected, or need another of the many other services provided by the city, to cover the cost of that service, we have to charge a reasonable fee. Those fees are evaluated each year to make sure they are in line with the surrounding cities. In Granbury, we strive to give you good value. There are numerous other smaller revenue sources, such as municipal court fines and fees, revenue from parks and recreation programs, events at the Lake Granbury Conference Center, and even interest collected on cash in the bank. All are meticulously tracked by the various city departments and accounted for by the Finance Department. So, that explains where the city revenue comes from. Now, what are some of the most impactful ways the money is spent? The most important city asset is our staff. After careful review, the proposed budget includes these new positions. A few years ago, city council began putting about $1 million in the annual budget for street improvements. In the last few months, we've seen Harbor Lakes Drive, Eminem Ranch Road, and Industrial Avenue get much-needed repairs paid for by the street improvement budget funds. Now, to share with us how the roads are selected and which ones are up for repair next, here's Rick Crownover, Assistant City Manager.
This year, the City of Granbury Street project will consist of the reconstruction of the old acting highway from US Highway 377 to the city limits, which are located just around the curve behind me.
Due to the economy, this will be a lean year for big new purchases or programs from the annual budget, but there are some.
One of the big IT upgrades is moving information being stored on local servers to a more cost-effective, secure, and convenient place in the cloud.
One of the improvements coming is new mulch at the playgrounds. We're also planning studies for new trails, sidewalks, and aquatic facilities.
Over the next two years, city funds will buy 52 new volunteer fire department radios, allowing us to better communicate with Granbury and Hood County firefighters.
Through a public-private partnership, we'll see how to renovate parts of the Gordon House and Chapel while keeping it historically accurate.
The city's airport will have a new runway and a new road leading to the new terminal building.
One of the city's most important documents is the Comprehensive Plan, a visionary guide for future development. This year, we'll start a two-year project to update the plan.
Here are the proposed capital projects divided by fund. And here's a look at them, project by project. on the budget. There's a ton of budget information. Archives, current budget, and line-by-line detail available online at granbury.orgopengov. For the City of Granbury, I'm Chuck LaCotta.
Thank you. Our own Chuck, right over here, if you haven't noticed. He's very good. And, you know, well done, and comes right, straight out of the budget book. I will open the public hearing now, if there is anyone to speak at a public hearing. I will close the public hearing at this point. And I'll look for discussion and information, questions that you might have for City Manager, and I see that the city financial director is here as well. Mr. Rodriguez.
Mayor, thank you. I think there's a lot of effort that this budget has gone, gone in. I know every councilman has looked at this from their perspective, and a lot of questions that I've received, and probably the same questions they've received, and I'm going to ask the city manager this question, and hopefully he can articulate it so that we understand, is, Chris, why is it that the county and the school district are able to lower their taxes so much? And I know the county went to the no new revenue tax, and we're here at .38. Can you give us an insight on that? And why are we standing at that?
It's a good question, and I know the perception in the public has that question on their mind as well. I've had that from some other folks. So, the proposed rate of 38 cents is the lowest rate that we've proposed in the last 20 years, 23 years. So, we are sensitive to that. Now then, we do provide a lot more service than, diversity of service than the county, and so we have a different scheme of how we have to do things. One of the things that doesn't go into that no new tax rate is the computation involving new property that's developed on the tax roll for the first time. We had about $89 million worth of new things built. Some of that was commercial, and some of it was residential. The county had, which netted a $312,000 gain of something that's not in the no new tax rate. And the county, for instance, brought in a little under $1 million from their new improved values. And so, with that, they have an extra almost $1 million to work with, where we're dealing with $312,000. In addition to that, we just issued bonds for about $42 million. We received $47 million, but we only had to borrow 40, 41, and some change, so because of our good credit rating. And so, we need to start servicing that debt as well. And so, this tax rate accounts for about $1.2 million going towards that debt service from this tax rate of 38 cents. And it leaves about $350,000 to go towards those capital projects that we're talking about. Also, what I'd like to express to the crowd, media, if you're watching, is that we're not planning any pay increases in this budget for our employees. So, it's a very lean budget, and you saw some of the things, I mean, parks improvements, we're planning to buy mulch. That's it. That's it. Think about that. Not a lawnmower, not a weed eater. We might buy a weed eater out of a small line item, but the big capital items, it's just not there. So, it's a very tight budget. But we do think that we're going to be able to work on a compensation plan for our employees. We've hired a consultant, an outside consultant, to do a study, and he's performed that study, and we reviewed that with the council. And to be competitive with the market and to keep and retain our employees and to recruit employees as needed, we need to make some severe adjustments. And there's no way that we can budget that in this environment. And so, what we're planning to do is look at the surplus revenue that we collect at the end of the year. Our budget year ends September 31st, September 30th, excuse me. And then, it takes about 45 days for us to close the books on that year. And then, we will see the revenue surplus that we have from different line items, like we budgeted amount for sales tax. If there's money above and beyond that, we're going to study that and see if that was due to one-time audits, or is that due to more people living in the city and the region and shopping here? And we're going to take a portion of that revenue that we see and allocate that across the pay scale to try to bring people up closer to where they need to be competitively. We plan on rolling that out in January, February, as time allows. And that will encourage our employees and help them to understand we're looking at this from a big picture and that we're also going to address those needs. Now then, if we see that we're collecting, say, like an extra $1 million in surplus revenue in this coming cycle, we'll find out how much of that is reliable for the next budget and budget towards that, not the surplus that really came in because of one-time audits or something like that. So, there's other things that happen too. Just like at the tourism department, we have two outages in a year. It creates more hotel tax revenue. So, if you only have one outage or no outage, it affects that line item as well. So, we've had a good year at the tourism department, and that surplus will be used, hopefully, to be able to understand how much is sustainable moving forward and be able to use those funds to reward those employees that are working in that area and get them to a competitive range with other cities our size and in our similar markets. So, that's what we're trying to do. And I'm really encouraged. This budget was worked on for almost a year, and the department heads have worked hard to hone down their line items. If any of you are familiar with a zero-based budget, that's basically the format that we use. We start off with zero, and we make them justify every expense that we take on and document. So, yeah. .38 cents is lower than last year, about 3/4 of a cent. Appraised values went up. The scary part about it all is the formula's so complicated, it's hard to communicate it. I don't know if y'all realize it, but it's just this minus this. There's a worksheet that's about nine pages long that the comptroller asks to fill out just to figure out what that tax rate needs to be. And there's like 100 lines of data that have to be entered into that. But it's literally nine pages of add this, subtract this, divide by this, and you end up with the no-new-tax rate. We've been very fortunate over the last 10 years to adopt what they would call a no-new-tax rate for six out of the last 10 years. And so, this will be, or seven out of the last 10 years, this will be the fourth out of 11 years that we will be above that no-new-revenue rate. So, senior citizens, you don't see a change. Your taxes are frozen. If you're living in a homestead and have filed the papers with appraisal district, you have your taxes are frozen. Whatever we do here or whatever changes at the dais, up or down, doesn't affect y'all. So, that's one way to look at it. And then, also, for the part that I'm saying is scary is there's a 10% cap that goes on everybody's tax bill if your tax bill is going to be more than 10% than last year. My personal one last year hit that cap. So, I'll be catching up on some of those old appraisals, and I'll be capped out again at 10% again. And many of you may or may not experience that same joy. But we're going to enjoy it and know that, and I want everybody to know at this dais and in this crowd and on social media right now that our goal as a council, as a city manager, as department heads, we want to give you the best bang for your buck. When you sit down and you write out that check to pay your taxes, we want you to look at how much you're paying the city and say, wow, I got a lot of service in return for that amount. And so, I want you to be all be proud of what we're doing. And I'll leave it at that. I'll answer any other questions y'all may have. Counsel?
Well, thank you, Chris. I just wanted some insight, and I wanted that to be as transparent to the audience and also to the public. I know this is a tough budget cycle, and I know that I personally, and I know some of the other councilmen, have reached out to you with questions and your staff, and you have answered those questions for our understanding. And I just want to say I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Counsel, other questions, comments, before we move forward here? None? Mr. Woodley, or you reaching for the other thing? I would like to emphasize what Mr. Rodriguez says in terms of soliciting advice and help on understanding the budget. Where did this go? Where does this come from? And staff, the entire staff has been outstanding, but I would have to point out that Mr. Kaufman and our CFO, Ms. Gregory back there, what number do you want to know? We have 300, 400 pages of numbers. What number do you want to know? Where did it come from? It's here, and it's understandable. I also want to comment a little bit on the opportunities that we have as community, not just city and county, but together as community. Because while we are beneficiaries of the tax reduction in the county, you know, I'm thankful for that, we are also contributors to the county. We all live in the county, if you're in the city. So, we too are Hood County. And from that, we pay county taxes. We pay into the revenue stream that they have, not just in real estate, but also in lateral roads, the library, and sales. Sales tax, there's a half a penny that goes there. The mechanics that go into building this budget are, I'm sure, just normal for city and county. But you could take it into, you know, a business standpoint, it's not just sales revenue. It is revenue that comes in that can only be used for this. It is revenue that only comes in at these three quadrants. It is revenue that only can be used if you have less than a .20 tax liability rating. It is a chore, and I have to appreciate the people that do this and make this understandable and actionable. And that's the key for me here. It's a lot of work that went into it. So, there's going to have to be some very specific motions here so that we can be clear and fulfill our obligations to the state and to other government entities. So, Mr. City Attorney, would you help me with this, please?
The first motion should be to adopt, oh, I'm sorry. The first motion should be to adopt Ordinance Number 2247, approving the fiscal year 2022-2023 annual operating budget.
And that is a recorded voice vote, right?
It is.
Okay. So, I'll start with the young lady at the end. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to adopt Ordinance 2247, approving the fiscal year 2022-2023 annual operating budget.
I second that motion.
Mr. Woodley, second that motion? I'll start at the end. Ms. Reiner, how say you?
Aye.
Mr. Vale?
Aye.
Mr. Woodley?
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir. And the mayor says aye. Passage 600, the second part of this motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to ratify the property tax increase reflecting in the fiscal year 2022-2023 annual operating budget.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Reiner, seconds. I'll start at the other end. Mr. Corrigan?
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Woodley?
Aye.
Mr. Vale?
Aye.
Ms. Reiner?
Aye.
And the mayor says aye. It also passes a 600. So, Delegations Agenda Item Number 7.1 has passed 600, both sections on that. Before we, I think we can finish up 7.2 as well, correct?
That'd be good.
Okay. 7.2, Consider Adopting Ordinance Number 22-48, Approving and Levying a Property Ad Valoreum Tax Rate for the City of Granbury for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor?
Ms. Reiner?
I make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2248, levying total property tax rate of .38 cents per $100 property valuation for the tax year 2022-23 for the purpose of maintenance and operation. The tax rate will be .157649. And for the payment of the principal and interest on the outstanding debt of the City of Granbury, the tax rate will be .222351.
Do I hear a second?
Go ahead.
Mr. Corrigan? Mr. Corrigan, seconds. We'll do this as a roll call as well. Ms. Reiner?
Aye.
How say you? Mr. Vale?
Aye.
Mr. Woodley?
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Corrigan?
Aye.
And the mayor says aye. So, it two passes a 600. Now, we're going to have a little recognition. And Mr. Kaufman, I'm going to call on you for this.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Rick Crownover, to share with us an award recently received for some really good stuff. It just keeps getting, an old country boy told me one time, it just keeps getting gooder and gooder. More better, more better.
I'd say it's money well spent.
Give me a microphone. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. We are thrilled. My guys slipped one in on me. I didn't know they submitted for this award. It's a, this is to our South Central Membrane Association. Membrane, in our world, is a fancy word for filters at the reverse osmosis. Microfiltration Surface Water Treatment Plant, designed by Emperor Tech Hibs and Todd and operated by these two gentlemen here, J.G. Bright and Daniel Barge. And what this is, this is a Best Tasting Water Award, first place.
First place.
Now, the South Central Membrane Association is a five-state. This is Texas, New Mexico, Oklahoma, Arkansas, Louisiana, and Kansas, I think is right. So, the competition was fierce. They won't tell you how many or who got second or anything like that. But anyway, we're thrilled to have this. We're very proud of the facility that our community has allowed us to build and serve you. A lot of thanks goes out to current and previous elected officials, city administration, like I said, our consulting engineers, Emperor Tech Hibs and Todd, and of course, my wonderful staff that is, I don't have to worry a whole lot about that one. That plant runs really well, and these gentlemen do a great job. So, thank you again for letting us do this.
Thank you all.
Another witness to the excellent service that we provide. Thank you, gentlemen, for all you do for us. And what a testimony to our community of the great work y'all are doing.
Okay. Let's move to Item 7.3. Consider Approving an Agreement with Buchanan Technologies as the City of Granbury's New Managed Service Provider for an Amount Not to Exceed $255,000 and Authorize City Manager to Execute the Agreement. Mr. Kaufman?
For this Agenda Item, I'd like to turn it over to our new Director of IT to go over what he's done and to put this bid together and to share with you the results of his research and hard work over the last 90 days. So, thank you. Go ahead, Chris Collins.
All right. So, currently, we are with an MSP that has been underperforming. We gave them notice mid-June, which was the requirement for our contract, to give them 60 days' notice. Some of the missteps that this current MSP had is they didn't have the proper staffing or backing to fulfill the requirements that the city needs. One of them being maintaining our criminal justice information systems standard, which is required to operate the police department's computer systems. So, when I went to go out to bid to look at different MSPs to take over for this, I was looking at the type of employees that they have, what their fiscal standing is, the capabilities that all of them have, and then the level of service.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Look here.
Oh. The level of service that was provided by that current company and looking at references. So, out of the five companies that I looked at, there were several that were small because I was looking at small business to try to help the small business out. But they didn't have the personnel or the resources to meet the city needs. So, I brought it down to three companies, Buchanan being one of them. CGI was the largest bid that we received. And then, Calian is a provider that I've used previously. Their bid came in a little bit high, too. But I was looking at overall value for the city. So, currently, the city was paying a little over $300,000 a year for our IT services for an underperforming MSP. And the current not-to-exceed is $255,000, which includes remediation for vulnerability scan that I had done against the city network. That was one of the requirements for me to take this position, was to identify if there's current vulnerabilities on our network through that third-party assessment. Over 3,000 vulnerabilities were identified, some of which are critical that have to get repaired pretty quickly. And Buchanan does have the staff and the capability to help do those remediations. So, based off of that, I recommend counsel approve the not-to-exceed of $255,000 for Buchanan Technologies and authorize the city manager to sign and execute that contract. I can ask any questions, answer any questions that you may have related to how I did this evaluation and any questions you might have about Buchanan.
Counsel, questions? No one wants to delve into the depths of the IT opportunity here? Mr. Kaufman?
I think this indirectly, we had, you know, we've got a very talented IT person sitting on this dais, and he's given me some good coaching through the past year on this thing. And I think we've ended up with a product that he likes. It's a mixed support system. We've got people on staff here that live here, that work here. And then, we have the big brother up the internet line. So, that's very helpful. So, I think the model that we've changed to is going to be more effective for us. Something that wasn't mentioned in the whole discussion with the budget is the new radio system that we have. We were looking to hire someone to manage that. It's basically a computer network. And also, have someone to do the police department IT services when they, you know, get in a new car, put in the radio, or the radio, and then the camera system, the computer system, all that stuff. So, we have a tech position budgeted in our budget for that. And we've got him already selected. And I think he's already in training with the PD as a police officer. So, he's going to move over to the IT department like Chris did. And hopefully, they'll still be able to maintain their license and do a little dual activity with Mitch and with the IT department. So, we're changing what we're doing, and we're trying to get to a better solution for our team here. So, with his recommendation, I wholeheartedly recommend it to you. So, with his recommendation, I wholeheartedly recommend it to you.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate the compliment, and also, thank you for moving to this, what we consider a hybrid version of IT services. My thoughts on this is that we have a great IT director. I asked him a couple of questions and to gauge his knowledge, and he's very knowledgeable in the areas that we are needing. There's a lot of things that were done by the, by the staff here from the IT perspective that needed more, more experienced level person as a director to look at the service level agreements of these contracts and understand that, the words and everything that goes into those service levels agreements. And I think Chris has that knowledge, and he brings it to the table with this contract, and, and this is the first contract that he's executing, if I'm mistaken. Is this the first one?
Well, I've had some other ones for the city, but this is the first one for.
Well, awesome. Thanks for looking out. Thanks for saving the city even more money on the MPS services and also, or MSP services, and also, thank you for the improvement of the services and keeping our network safe. Thank you.
So, counsel, do I hear a motion? Consider approving agreement with Buchanan Technologies as the City of Granbury's new managed service provider for an amount not to exceed 255,000 and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley moves.
Second.
Mr. Vale, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There being no one opposed, motion number 7.3 passes. Thank you, Chris. Number eight on the agenda items, sent us some comments on matters not on the agenda. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes for a combined total of 30 minutes allotted at this time for comments regarding matters not listed on the agenda. The city council will be allowed to receive input or information for future agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussions. So, I have, I think, six or seven of those, so we have time to do this. I'm going to call on Mr. Brett Quillan first to come up, and Dr. Victoria Calder will follow him.
Okay. My name is Brett Quillan, and I am a pastor here in Granbury. I'm also the president of Hood County Fallen Veterans. Yes, sir.
And your address.
Oh, 3550 Peak Road, Granbury, Texas.
Thanks, sir.
I stand before you today, and I'm going to try to do this in three minutes. Like I said, I am a pastor. The Hood County Fallen Veterans Organization was created for one mission and one mission only, and that is to erect a memorial on the historic courthouse lawn to honor and remember the sacrifices made by Hood County residents who paid the ultimate price for our freedom that we know and love today, so that all who live in Hood County or visit the town of Granbury may see the names of these brave heroes, that the families of these fallen will know that their loved ones who never made it home are not forgotten, and future generations will know that there is a great cost that has been paid to earn us our liberties. Many of these brave heroes on our list, there's 44, they're all over Hood County, but we have several that were born and raised right here in Granbury, Texas. What I am asking the city council to consider and to put on an agenda is to help us raise funds for this. I'm asking for a one-time donation or gift of $8,000 to help us reach our goal. The Hood County Commissioners Court approved a similar donation of $8,000 on August 23rd, 2022. The City of Granbury and Hood County joining together to help with this memorial, help us with this memorial. By the $8,000 donated from the county and the city, it would help secure us a $20,000 anonymous donation that is promised to give us a $20,000 donation if the city and county will join together to help. The reason they want city and county to help is because they want these funds raised quickly before prices continue to go up. We've already raised almost $20,000 ourselves, so that would be $56,000 total, and we could order this memorial. I'm asking you to consider this proposal, not for me, not for our organization, but literally for those who went to war and did not come home. Several, like I said, were born and raised in this area of Granbury, and we need to honor them. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Victoria Calder, and then Reverend Father Smith, Stuart Smith.
Good evening. I'm Victoria Calder. I live at 1911 Greenwing in Granbury, and I don't have any notes tonight. I really just wanted to ask you to consider the words of Walt Whitman, one of my favorite authors, when he said, "Listen to all sides and filter them from yourself." And I think that's something we all want in our lives. If you were before a judge and jury, you would hope that they would listen to all sides and filter them. The same thing with your friends, your family, but in your very, very, very important role here, representing the citizens, I think that it's important that you do so, and that you truly listen to all sides and filter them for yourself, not take at face value what anyone says, myself included. I know when some of you first came to our home over two and a half years ago to discuss the proposed wastewater plant, we told you the story of one of our neighbors. He's well in his 90s, and he, he came to the wrong house when he knocked on our, our door, but he wanted to submit to TCEQ his comments. He had a yellow pad where he'd written it out, and he had on his, his little cap, I didn't, I'd never met him, but he'd driven over, and he had on a little cap that said "Air Force." So, I thanked him for his service, and he went on to say that he went into the Air Force in 1957. He flew in the Korean War, and he wanted to put forward his objections to the wastewater plant. He ended up leaving because I told him I would submit it for him if he wanted by PDFing it. It's very complicated, and he, he didn't know what that was. But anyway, in telling you that story, or some of you, not all of you, we were told, we're not interested in emotions. We're not going to make a decision about the wastewater plant based on emotions. We want facts. So, we've given you facts for two and a half years. The Congressional Research Service Report, someone no longer here literally threw it back at me, saying they just want to get published. That's the Congressional Research Service Report on the impact of, of golden algae triggered by wastewater effluent. We gave you sound science, sound engineering, nothing but facts, and I have to say, many times, it's been met with contemptuous comments. In one case, I, I stood here and said, "You can talk to me that way. I've survived high-grade aggressive cancer. I can survive mean words, but please don't do that to the others." After we'd left you, those comments were made. So, I have to say, please give your citizens the respect. When they do come forward, listen to all sides, filter them for yourselves, do your homework, and not listen to any one, in this, any one person without doing that. I know you're busy, you have families, you have businesses, and it's not always easy to look into things with depth, but when you're presented with facts, with data by anyone or, or emotion, I hope you will listen to all sides and filter them for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Calder. Father Smith, and Ms. Anita Branch will follow.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, city council members, my name is Father Stuart Smith, and I live at 4614 Stony Creek Court, Acton, Granbury, and I want to bring you a word of encouragement, if that's okay. I want to thank you on behalf of the citizens of this town for your patience, your perseverance, and for pursuing excellence and progress for Granbury. And I want to ask you to please keep putting up with the guff you get during these political seasons, one of which is about to open. You practice self-restraint during these meetings. I've, I've seen them sorely tested. I trust you will continue to practice self-restraint when friend or foe tempts or tests you with hot takes or rumors about candidates and causes. And finally, a reminder from a, the best book, from James, Chapter 3, about the power, mostly destructive, of the tongue. My brethren, be not many masters, knowing that we shall receive the greater condemnation, for in many things we offend all. If any man offend not in word, the same as a perfect man, enabled also to bridle the whole body. Behold, we put bits in the horse's mouths that they may obey us, and we turn about their whole body. Behold also the ships, which though they be so great and are driven of fierce winds, yet are they turned about with a very small helm whithersoever the governor listeth. Even so, the tongue is a little member and boasteth great things. Behold, how great a matter a little fire kindleth! And the tongue is a fire, a whirl of iniquity. So is the tongue among our members, that it defileth the whole body and seteth on fire the course of nature and to set on fire of hell. For every kind of beasts and of birds and of serpents and of things in the sea is tamed and hath been tamed of mankind, but the tongue can no man tame. It is an unruly evil, full of deadly poison. Therefore, bless we God, even the Father, and therewith curse we with men who are made after the similitude of God. Out of the same mouth, mouth proceedst blessing and curse, my brethren; these things ought not so to be. Do the fountains send forth the same place, from the same place water and bitter? Can the fig tree, my brethren, bear olive berries, either of vine figs? So can no fountain both yield saltwater and fresh? Who is a wise man and endued with knowledge among you? Let him show out of a good conversation his works with meekness of wisdom. But if you have bitter envying and strife in your hearts, glory not and lie not against the truth. But the wisdom that is from above is first pure, then peaceable, gentle, and easy to be entreated, full of mercy and good fruits, without partiality and without hypocrisy. And the fruit of righteousness is sown in peace of them that make peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Father Smith. Ms. Anita Branch and Mr. Ken Hackett will follow.
Hello, my name is Anita Branch, and I live at 1720 Bent Tree Court in Granbury, and I don't really have any prepared statement to make either, except I was perusing the, the website for the City of Granbury, and I was looking for some information, and I ran across something that kind of surprised me, and I don't know really how old this is, but it doesn't really match the way that I think Granbury is today. Here on the website, it says, "How do you describe Granbury Hood County's lifestyle? Simply, it is the best of all worlds." And it goes on to say, "It offers residents a chance to enjoy small-town living with access to numerous amenities." Some of those amenities that are discussed in here refer to beautiful Lake Granbury, which is something that we're all seeking to protect. And yet, like I said, this, this doesn't match what I see in the City of Granbury today. All I see is explosive growth, uncontrolled, with, with no infrastructure to support it, and I don't really recognize the City of Granbury that I moved to nearly 20 years ago. So, what, what's caused that change? I don't really understand, because I know that the folks that are my neighbors, my friends, they all feel the same way that I do, that the character of the City of Granbury is changing dramatically, and even it goes down so far as to the anger between various city council people against residents. There's just all kinds of incivility going on, and I don't really understand that, because that's really not what I think Hood County people are made of or for. So, I'd just like to ask that, you know, with the big infrastructure issues that we're having, one of the things that, that this little website says, the city's website, they always refer to it as Granbury and Hood County. Well, Hood County, the residents that live outside the city limits have, have been ignored, and we are fighting a good fight to protect what we feel is the quality of living in, in this area to, and the lifestyle that we're fighting for is that small-town living. So, I'd like to ask that you all please consider the impacts of all your actions, not only on the city residents, but also on those of us who live out in Hood County, to include the disastrous proposal for an east wastewater treatment plant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Branch. Mr. Hackett, and then Ms. Rist will follow.
Thank you, counsel. My name's Ken Hackett. Address is 201 East Pearl. I come as a business owner and as a president of the Historical Merchants Association. Would like just to visit with you a moment about the recent issue over the off-premise signage. As president of the HGMA, it's brought to my attention that several signs have been removed from the right-of-way in and around the square. And digging into that a little deeper, I understand why, and I'm not here to complain. I'm just here to suggest a few things. There are two types of signs that were removed, one that advertised businesses and one that advertised events and public interest issues. And I understand the staff position that those signs had to be removed because no permit had been found in the files. But I do think that a sign that may have been up for more than two decades, a few phone calls should have been made by staff to let these business owners know about it. Secondly, is my understanding that the signs that the HGMA had put up on the corners only advertised events and directing people to parking, so it had a public interest as well. So, what I'm requesting the council do in the near future is that they direct staff to review and modify the ordinances that it applies to the historical district. As we know, we're no longer a square, we're a district, as we're ruled by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I think it's time to look at it in a comprehensive way. We understand permits must be required and run through the proper channels, and we will continue to do that as an association. But I also would respectfully request the council and staff to be, allow those signs to be put back up under a temporary approval until a review of these ordinances that affect those particular signs and how they may be placed in such a way that's similar to the past, but pleasing to the overall ambience of directing people to businesses just off the square, and of course, to our events and to the public parking places. We were, and finally, again, we had a great, a great show this weekend on Labor Day. Very pleased, I got great reports, not only from the merchants around the square, but the vendors had record-setting days, and we appreciate the staff's help when y'all do that. Y'all provide the stage and barricades, and we, we think the permit fees are quite fair and reasonable, and we appreciate the coordination and help that your staff provides. So, thank you very much for all their work, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hackett.
My name is Stacy Rist. I live at, I own property at 3101 Old Granbury Road. I represent the Bennett and Rist family, who own Bennett's Camping Center and RV Ranch. Our family business has been in Granbury since 1972. That's 50 years this year. Most of you had not even visited Granbury for the first time, when our family started investing in our local community. For those in the audience that have not been here the last two-plus years, the city has chosen to sacrifice our family business at the foot of their planned east sewer plant. I would like to first say, congratulations on the water. We do have great water, but how long can they continue to earn those awards when the city proposes to dump 2 million gallons of treated sewer water less than two miles up into the lake? I just don't, don't see how that is possible. I had written a speech for tonight, but after discussion with our associates in Austin, I've decided to harder, hold our cards a little closer to my chest. It is amazing how much support we see for our side, two later, two years later, from our customers and other citizens of Granbury and Hood County. Just this week, a customer mentioned- the Capitol Building. This phrase has added to our confidence. At this point, we see that victory can come in one of several ways over a long period of time. Our family has 50 years invested, one small step at a time. We already know what that looks like. The only quick resolution that we would see, other than our confidence in TCEQ and they're, they're seeing the basis for denying the permit, would be for y'all to put it on the agenda to withdraw the permit and build a plant at another location. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rist. And I thank all of you for the citizen comments. For now, I declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session. That all members are present, the city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation; 551072, deliberation regarding real property; and 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session and all council members are present. Counsel, is there any action that needs to be taken in this open session?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, City Attorney.
Pursuant to the conversations and discussions that were had regarding economic development pursuant to 551.087, if the council is seeking to take any action in regard to any of those, there are a few motions that would need to be made specifically to the Granbury Hospital Corporation economic development issue. The first motion that would need to be made would be to, to authorize the city manager to enter into a 3D development agreement with Granbury Hospital Corporation for the development of the medical facility.
Counsel. Mr. Corrigan.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded as stated by City Attorney Sorrell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. It's six and oh.
And Mr. Mayor, the, the, the next issue down the same line with the Granbury Hospital Corporation would need to be a subsequent motion that would authorize the city manager to enter into a development agreement with the Granbury Hospital Corporation regarding alternative wastewater treatment as well as a waiver of section 2.9b of the City of Granbury subdivision ordinances in order to move that along.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made. Second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this item? No further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Passes six and oh.
And then finally, on that same agenda item with, with the same entity, some of the property that's involved in this economic development is being purchased and that's being purchased from Granbury Center Limited LP. So there would need to be a motion made to authorize the city manager to enter into a separate development agreement with Granbury Limited LP in order to waive the provisions of section 2.9 of the City of Granbury subdivision ordinance of chapter 10 in order for that sale to transpire as to that certain described property, but for that property not to be developed or platted until the city's moratorium terminates, expires, is revoked, or until some subsequent development agreement is executed.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Ms. Riner.
Second.
And Mr. Corrigan, second sub-motion. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. There being no nays, it passes six and oh.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Sorrell.
Again, a lot of economic development tonight. If the council wants to take action in regard to the discussion regarding entering into an agreement for the sidewalks and securing some grant funds with the Church of Christ, then there would need to be a motion made that would authorize the city manager to enter into that development agreement with the Granbury Church of Christ in order to, Granbury Church of Christ in order to secure an easement for the installation of those sidewalks as well as any necessary construction easements and to work with the Church of Christ to secure grant funds for the development and construction of the said sidewalks for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Granbury.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wiley.
I would make that motion.
I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez says a second. Discussion? There being no discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. There being no nays, it passes six and oh.
And then finally, the, the last item that was discussed pursuant to 551.087 regarding economic development was the property and development issue for Granbury Health Real Estate Partners. If the council after the discussion in executive session wants to move forward with that, then they would need to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a development agreement that would secure a waiver for the sale of that certain real property owned by Granbury Health Real Estate Partners to allow for that property to be platted and divided into two tracts, allowing an approximate 3.338 developed acres currently housing a medical facility to be sold, and then the remaining approximate 6.643 acre tract to remain undeveloped until such time as the city's moratorium terminates, expires, is revoked, or any subsequent development is entered.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made. Motion has been seconded. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Hearing no nays, it passes six and oh.
That's all I got.
And you have all of this down so that we're all legally protected here. Thank you. Are there other comments?
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to go ahead and earlier tonight, a citizen brought forward the signage issue. I'd like to go ahead and, and make a motion to direct the staff or city manager and the staff to review the current signage ordinance and maybe bring it to us at a future council date.
We can't vote on it, but I'll take your direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
At the same time, I'd like to direct Chris and the city staff to look at the feasibility for the request by the citizen on the $8,000 donation that would match the county for the statute that was outlined tonight for the, as requested by the citizen.
There are other comments along that line? Mr. Kaufman?
I'll get it taken care of.
Very good. Did you want to put a timeline on that for Mr. Kaufman? Two weeks, three weeks, three sessions?
I would say probably October, end of October. That'll give him time to review.
October, November.
I think it needs to go to the P and Z first. We'll start the ball rolling.
Right. Other discussion? Well, if there's no other discussion, I am adjourning the meeting. We are finished for the night. Thank you all.